This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 26, 2023 special commissioners meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of a potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241.0153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. Mike, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll move into public comment for non-agendaized items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. One, approval of January 26, 2023 special agenda notice.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, which is the approval of that June 26 special agenda notice.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into item one. For discussion and possible action regarding the current standings of the negotiations between Battle Mountain General Hospital and Lander County for the EMS agreement. Proceeding with negotiations and modification requests by the Board, terminating the agreement, and other matters properly related thereto.
Good morning, Commission. So I wanted to put this on clearly before July 1. It did not work out with the Austin meeting and other things that took place. So we had to obviously have this meeting. It's pretty important. So wherever you guys would like to start, we can start. Let's see, we've got Jason here. So this is a, hopefully we can have a productive meeting and get somewhere.
Some files, whoever wants to, let's open if you.
Yeah, you guys seen in your backup Battle Mountain General Hospital's proposal. Me and Jason have, I have a stack of emails here. We went back and forth through email quite a bit. And then at the end of the day is where we came to is that I just didn't feel comfortable making a deal on the proposal that he provided. He clearly didn't feel comfortable making a deal on the proposal that I provided. So I figured the best way to do it's right here in public for everybody and iron it out and see where we want to go with it.
Jason, would you like to speak?
Sure. I decided to sit up front because I knew I would be sitting here at one point. Jason Blake for the record. So yes, back in the end of March, March 28th or so, I submitted to Bert a proposal. We had been going back and forth trying to figure out how to reconcile and come to agreement on certain issues, and we had made making some progress. And so on March 28th, I sent our proposal out to him. The proposal was meant to be kind of our stance of where we could go, what we could do. We had talked about, let me just open it really quick here, about the 90-day termination clause. No problem there. Neither one of us had an issue there. I think that's fair for both of us. We, a little item that came up in our conversation was an additional little logo on the ambulances to show that there's a relationship and a link between Lander County and the hospital. So there would be a little logo on there. No big deal on that. But then we started to break down a little bit regarding the Southern EMS down in Austin and Kingston. All this time, Austin and Kingston have been separate from our ambulance. They've been under the control and responsibility of Lander County, yet they function under our medical direction, under our insurances, under our licensing. And that becomes kind of difficult for liability reasons because I can't continue to insure somebody that's not my employee, if that makes sense. It means that my liability is reaching across employee lines. And so, and in the past, we had tried to pull them together, but for one reason or another, they remain separate. And I think the EMTs down in the South prefer that, to be honest. I think Bert and even Keith Westingard before prefer that. And so where we started to break down a little bit in this subject is that if we need to separate, we need to separate so that I don't continue to carry a liability for someone that doesn't answer to me or answer to my director. And so as part of the proposal, it states that we'd need to pursue a new license for the Southern area. We would help in that process. We needed to get new provider identification numbers that would come along with that license. We can help with that. We would need to get new insurance credentialing. We can help with that. There would need to be county liability that would be picked up for the Southern ambulances. And then billing practices. The county would have to decide how to do the billing part of it. We outsource currently to another company to do our EMS billing. The county could do the same type of situation. We just need to kind of separate those operations so that I'm responsible for my group and the county is responsible for their group. Biggest reason for that is liability.
Jason, could I just ask you a question on that? Did I understand it right? Did you say the hospital sends out all the EMS to a third party? Or the hospital does sends all their billing to a third party?
The EMS.
Just the EMS?
To a third party. And then through our electronic health records, our first bills for the hospital are managed a different way.
Okay, so you don't do any local billing at all, really?
Not for EMS, no.
Or for the hospital?
For the hospital. We make phone calls and yeah, we follow up on all of that. Then it goes on. There was conversation about reporting. I report on a monthly basis to the hospital board. And the board packet has their department financial broken out according to budget. It also has, we can add some information, run information. And my proposal is that I'll present that to my board, and then we will send that to you as a county commission for update and information purposes. If you guys have questions, you can always ask, but it would be presented to the hospital board in public meeting. There was questions. Oh, another thing that we were working on was rental or lease of the ambulance rigs. The county owns the ambulances outright, no questions there. But there's a possibility, or there's a way that we can get a higher reimbursement if we lease those ambulances from the county because we can show that as an expense on our cost report. We haven't been able to do that up to this point. That was part of my proposal is that we would rent back or lease back those ambulances so that we could show an expense on our cost report. Another area, so there was questions regarding wages and benefits. I think that was probably brought up by some of the EMTs in conversation. I have had a conversation. I've got a little committee that I work with at the hospital for this purpose. And we met with Mike Harris. We came up with some increases that would need to be handled, and I worked that into the service proposal. So this is a traditional service agreement. For this amount of money, we'll provide this service. And so I built in those increases as suggested. So the rate would be $25,000 per month, $300,000 per year, and we will provide the services. That would entail an increase of pay to the EMTs and paramedics and AEMTs, they're all in that group, according to the areas or the standards that we agreed on with Mike Harris' part of that conversation. The benefits, we have been addressing benefits for the whole hospital over the past couple of years. But just within the past few months, we have continued to address the benefit package, the insurances for the hospital. We went self-funded two years ago, year and a half, two years ago, as a self-funded insurance plan. And just a couple of months ago, the Board took action to reduce, drastically reduce, the cost of dependent care to the employee. The employee only has to pay 25% of that dependent care cost, which is a pretty good benefit for them. And so that's all addressed in here. Even at that rate, as explained, I don't know what's in your packet. $25,000 doesn't get us to break even. Doesn't get us there. Knowing that we're going to lose money, we're okay with that. This has never been a financial thing for the hospital. This has been a care issue for the hospital. I believe that by having the ambulance as part of the hospital, there is no silo effect. There is no seams that have to be covered. If we need people there, we have people there. There's no questions asked about liability. There's no questions asked about who's getting paid or who's paying who. There's no questions about any of that. They're all part of one team and they just flow. There's one medical direction. They're all a team. And in my opinion, that is the best way to provide medicine is to keep us all without silos and all without barriers. And so that has been my push. It has not been financial. Yet, we do need some financial assistance with this, especially as we're trying to increase rate or wages, benefits, and of course, our supplies continue to go up. I also, in this proposal, ask for periodic increases for various inflationary forces. Over the past year and a half or so, everybody's seen the inflationary increases. And also, with this proposal being a long-term agreement, I think there should be some checkpoints in between at whatever duration that we can check and see, is everything okay? Is, are we making the calls? Are we, are our standards high? Do we need to increase the rates? Do we not need to increase the rates? Is everything fine? And so I do think there needs to be some checkpoints there. With this, my final piece in this, and I don't know if you wanted me to go through this proposal. I'm just rambling, I guess. The proposal allows the county to set a specific budget for the EMS services, which I think is a benefit to the county taxpayers so that they know exactly this is how much is going to EMS. And then on the hospital side, it allows us to continue to provide seamless care. No silos, no questions about who's in charge, who's not in charge, whose patient is it, whose patient isn't it. It's one seamless flow from pre-hospital even to post-hospital care. And so that's what I have put before you. There have been requests for a separate audit of EMS financials. I'm not agreeable to that. That would have to be something that the Board would have to choose, but that would be another fairly significant budget item. We currently have a medical facility or a medical contracted auditing service that looks at all of our services, and they audit us every year. I don't feel like we need to do anything extra there. And there's also been a request to completely separate the EMS financials from the hospital, and I'm not agreeable in that area as well. We've been doing this for 12 years roughly now, and the processes have been good. And they have been audited by auditors every single year without any question. And so I don't think we need to separate that. That being said, I can still run a profit and loss, basic profit and loss, based on budget anytime. I present that every month to the hospital board. Another area, this kind of goes back to the wage and benefits. The area that I can agree on in a contract is that we will remain competitive and sustainable in our wages and our benefits. That's the promise and guarantee that I can put out there. Bert, do you have anything to add? I don't know if that's what you guys wanted, but.
No, that is a good overview of it. And just so you're aware, Jason, I believe in their backup is what they have, is just your proposal and the numbers. So this, everything else is just open for discussion. I did not share the multiple email chains that went back and forth. That was not part of the package, just the proposal. So a couple of things, the audit, I'd like to address that. My idea was not for a separate audit, but their audit with us and how the county does it, any contract service that we do is separated out, and the audit is gone through where we have hard numbers. So if this commission were to come to me and say, hey, you know, we were working with Honeywell, we would like to see what we paid them this year. We can pull that and here you go. With the ambulance service, there is not that. It's all combined into one hospital audit, so there are no hard numbers. And the reason that I feel that's important is you go even to the financial report that Jason gave us in our previous meeting over this. In July, there was a $10,000 loss, all the way to in March, an $84,000 loss. So we have a huge, and then you have April, it must have been a payment or something that came in, $186,000 to the positive. August and September were $22,000 and $28,000 to the positive. So there's a huge discrepancy on where the, what we have from month to month coming and going in the EMS. So that's what I was asking for in the audit, is I would like to see hard numbers that we can go through that are specific to EMS that do not intermingle with the remainder of the hospital's operation. Just pointing that out. And then for the insurance side of it, I'm unaware. We have a whole bunch of EMS, I believe, back here. I'm unaware of anybody not siloing or working well with each other. We've done this for multiple years with Austin being separated out for reasons prior to Jason. And it's been, and it's working well. It's the only way we've kept a service in Southern Lander County. And that's why I'm not a fan of separating that back out. As I was down there when we were paying them $10,000 a month to have a service down there, and they would come down for storms only. No fault to them, they just couldn't keep employees down there. And that's just what worked out for Southern Lander County. Now we have a great staff down there that's doing a great service. I don't want that interrupted if we can help that at all. So I'm not real flexible to that, but obviously I'm to this Board's, whatever this Board chooses. But in negotiations, I said that's not really something. We've always paid the insurance on the vehicles, and the only thing that the hospital's been responsible for has been their employees that they pay for from their side. So I'm not sure, and I know there's some medical things there that Jason's speaking of as well, but to me, it's working well, kind of separated out. So I don't understand the needing to combine. So I was hesitant on that, and these are the things that I want us to discuss here and figure out what is probably the best for everybody. I was unaware of Mikey meeting with you guys and coming up with some things. So maybe, you know, maybe Mikey can present, you know, talk to that because what I'm looking for ultimately is a good, solid deal for everybody involved. And the main winner, and like I've told Jason and Mikey, is that if we look at any service in Lander County, if you look at the Sheriff's Department, they lose a lot of money every year, but when you call them, it's nice to have them there. This is another one of them services that's very important that I feel that there's going to be some losses taken. I don't know that the county should have to take 100% of them in order for it to be a fair deal for everybody. So maybe Mikey can speak to some of the negotiations or whatever's going on in that.
For the record, Mike Harris, I'm the former director of Lander County EMS. Still a paramedic here. I was brought in with Jason's EMS committee to kind of discuss, I think, what would make EMS happy. We did talk about the insurance changes and wage increases, but I don't recall specific percentages or numbers that were ever brought to the table. I don't know if you guys have those, but I don't recall any specific numbers. But we did have a meeting discussing those changes that were going to happen, or supposed to happen.
And they are built into our budget for this next fiscal year, those increases, as agreed upon. Regarding the insurance.
Do you have, off the wage, do you have what you guys came up with? Do you have a number of like wage and stuff like that for us to see kind of what you guys talked about?
Yes, for an EMT. So that's the basic EMT. We're looking at starting $18 to $19 per hour. A EMT, $22 to $25 per hour. And paramedic, $26, $29 an hour in those areas.
Does that, does that consideration off of national average or to rural counties or what's the?
Yep, we looked at specifically Elko and Winemucca specifically. Elko, we kind of threw out because they, I find an EMS is an interesting thing. In business practice, it's odd to schedule overtime on a regular basis. But EMS seems to schedule overtime on a regular basis. Elko schedules a lot of overtime, and so that inflicts their numbers. When they say their EMTs are making this much money, it's based on inflated numbers due to overtime. The way we have run our business and our structure here is very similar to Humboldt General in their EMS. And so with Mike, we agreed that it's probably best for us to focus more on a competitive area with Humboldt because the overtime's about the same. And so that's where we found our areas. Good question.
So I have a question. With $300,000 a year and the increase in wages, so at the time when they're not busy and they're helping at the hospital, you're utilizing them over there. So how is that working out for us if you were utilizing them to help you in the ER? How does that benefit, I mean, where you're utilizing them in your ER and paying them in your ER, but we're actually paying the increase for the higher wage? Does that make sense, that question?
How it helps you.
How is that benefiting us?
How it helps you is. Is that it solidifies, that was the question that was brought. It solidifies the employment, the employees. And yes, they do help in the ER when needed in the ER. That helps the patient. It helps the public. I don't know if it helps you or the county commission specifically, but it helps that patient with patients' care. And it guarantees that we have somebody there for that help. I don't know if that answered your question, but that's what it does.
Let me ask it a different way then. Just kind of walk me through the day. If you've got an EMT or a paramedic on call and they're to work, what have they scheduled, eight hours, 10 hours?
24 hours. 24, 48.
All right, so they don't have any calls, so they're not sitting in the EMS office? They are at the hospital?
If needed.
Needed on a hour-to-hour basis?
No, 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 no. On a minute-by-minute basis, if they're needed in the hospital.
Okay, so here I am, I'm an EMT and I'm sitting in the office waiting, and I don't have any calls. The hospital calls over and says, could you help us?
Yes, that's how it works. We have a duty cellphone. They call, so some days they don't need us. We check in with them every day, but sometimes they don't need us. And then some days we'll be in there for 24 hours. It just depends on the day.
Okay, so what we're saying is no wonder the audit isn't going to reflect that. The audit reflects I'm being paid by an EMS service and the hospital is utilizing me. So if you don't have the service, then you can't call them and you're going to have to add more employees?
We would take whatever steps needed to fill whatever gaps.
Okay, I can see why the audit would be very confusing then when we're utilizing in both places like that. If something should happen today and we decide not to go with the service with the hospital and we're looking at the EMS building, have you thought about what the negotiations would be for us to use the EMS building?
Yes, we have. Bert and I have broached the subject a little bit. The EMS area that would be occupied is approximately 4,452 square feet. I have calculated out what the utility and maintenance costs have been on average over the past year. I've also got a study from a company called BB, BBG? BBG. It's a third-party company that works with Northeastern Nevada Medical Center. When we rented space out to them, this group came in and they did an evaluation of the property and of the square footage, and they were able to give us an approximate value of that square footage and including the utilities and everything. And so I kind of based my assumption that I gave to Bert, I said $5,000. According to their figures, it's actually $5,700 and some odd dollars. But that would need to be approved by my Board. But I'm kind of expecting somewhere in that range, yeah.
So I did add three questions for Jason if this were to come back to Lander County. Three things that I thought were important for this meeting is, you know, the price, obviously, to rent that building back, the John Peters Building, and continue housing the ambulances there. An hourly rate for the assistance time in the ER to be broke out for any paramedic or EMT that would be over there assisting in the ER? What kind of rate they exchange there would be on the hours they spend in the ER? And the first write or refusal for all ground transports that they could possibly do? I believe that based off the numbers and everything, the majority of the revenue is generated through transports. So that's important to be able to transfer as many patients as we possibly could if this was to be our service. And there's some sort of hourly rate on that for the employees that would be over there to offset maybe some of the. to offset maybe some of the rent costs or some of the other things that are that are in there.
So did we have any, was there a response as far as right of refusal?
Yeah, so my response was that our customary practice would be to utilize the most available and closest ground service. Same thing with flight, we'd use the closest and most available. And so by that mere statement, we'd be calling Lander County EMS first, giving them that opportunity to say, yes, we can do it, or no, we can't, or it's gonna take us three hours or whatever, and then we can decide on that going forward. That being the fact, that would be our practice. I have not made it a practice personally and professionally to sign first right of refusal for anybody, not even our our air ambulances. Both of them have approached me asking for an exclusive deal. I said, no, I want to have all opportunities going forward so that I can take care of that patient. Now, I will tell you right now that we could even, well, we will utilize first call for grand ambulance to Lander County ambulance. That's best practice. We're gonna do best practice there for ground transports. If it's flight, if the doctors, nurses feel it's flight, we won't be calling to give that option to to a ground service. On the other question about hourly rates. At this point, and I spoke with other CEOs at other hospitals that would be in a similar situation where the ambulance is separate from the hospital. They don't use the ambulance and EMTs to use or for services in the hospital. They have their personnel trained, they have everything in place so that their patient is taken care of by their employees. And that's the direction that we would go. So if if our employees needed more training, if we needed more employees, if we needed a call schedule, if we needed different things like that, we would put that in place.
Just to comment, I don't see the harm there would be in signing a first right of refusal with Lander County. I mean, it's just, I know you say best practice, and I don't think it's going to be an issue that this board, especially if it ever did come for us, that, I mean, if there was circumstances, we'd look at it. But what it does do, it puts some sort of a guarantee there for us that we won't be overlooked. So I honestly don't see why that wouldn't be acceptable as a negotiating term for you, that first right of refusal, signing. Yes, ma'am?
I'm the county attorney. I'm just curious, who makes the decision for the first right of refusal? Who makes that call?
The board. I can take it back to the board in an agreement or in whatever.
I didn't hear that.
The the board? The hospital board would make that call?
For the first right of refusal?
That's what Jason said. I believe he misunderstood your question. I think I think her question was, who determines if they're gonna ground transport them or if they're gonna call Elko or Humboldt to come for flight? Make that transport? Yes.
The nurses and the and the the doctors will, and the family will make the decision of how to transport. That's done right in the emergency room. They decide, is this worthy of ground or worthy of?
So then after they make that call and they say, yeah, no, I would, I prefer, because my understanding is even the the ground transports are really close, especially with good weather, to air by the time that they, you know, get their flight plan and come out here and land and load the patient, fly back, that they're pretty comparable. So say the family says, you know, we want to transport by ground. Then who at that point makes the call if they're gonna call Humboldt or somebody? I think that's more.
Is is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Then that, the decision's made in the in the emergency room. If it's going to be ground or if there's that close divide, they'll make the decision. And like I said, practice, best practice is to call the the closest and most available.
And it's made by the doctors and the nurses?
You bet. And families, yeah, with with family input there, yes.
So at what point does the board, you said it's the board's decision?
If there's an agreement that needs to be approved, then it would go to to our board for them to approve a first right of refusal or whatever contract comes comes to fruition from this. It would go to the hospital board for their final approval.
For first right of the?
For their final, for their final approval.
We're talking about the first right of?
Yes.
And that would be made by the hospital board?
The contract would.
The contract would.
The contract, the hospital board would have to approve a first right of refusal contract.
And then on the operations level, it'd be the doctors, nurses, and input families?
That's right.
Kim?
Kim, can you come up front or speak a little louder?
The first question would be, how is that decision? I understand that decision would be made from the doctors, who, whether you're gonna use ground transport or not. But how would you go about doing that? Would you call dispatch to dispatch them out or would you call them from the emergency room? Call Humboldt or whoever? How is that, is that gonna go through our county dispatch?
If if it's going to.
For a transport?
Once the decision's made, it does, we make the decision in the ER who we're gonna call.
Oh, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name's Hope Bauer, the CNO. So the process is, I mean, we decide someone's gonna need a higher level of care. Then we talk to the patient or if possible, their family or whatever. We decide if they want someone specifically. Almost all the time we go through, if it's a ground transfer, we're automatically going through our team unless they can't do it. If they can't do it, then we're gonna go with someone else. Then we contact that, that, we we contact them. If they can't, then we would contact Humboldt and ask if they can. Because we've got to find out if they're able to do it before we even dispatch anybody.
Sure, and I get that. So with that, if there was a ground tran, and this is all assuming that EMS is with the county, okay? So they decide they want to go by ground. The patient has a right to use whoever they want. Could they say, we want Humboldt to come get us? Does that, I mean, play into that?
It's their call.
As a patient's?
For the most part, I mean, we usually, like, if if time is the issue or whatever, we talk to the patient and just say, you know what? We don't recommend that because we have a crew right here, they're ready to go, this is gonna take time. This is what we want, you know? It's it's kind of a conversation between everybody, trying to do what's right for everybody, and we want to take the best care of the patient. So if if they were adamant that they didn't want to go with Lander County, then we would respect their wishes and call Humboldt.
Sure. Okay, my next question is, and I don't want to sound rude with this. So the the EMS works with the hospital closely, and I know that, I've been here long enough to know that. Is the ER not fully staffed enough to take care of everything that goes in the ER without EMS? Because if the EMS is short-staffed, are you guys fully staffed enough to cover or to take care of your own staff? Or are you guys ended up being short-staffed as well?
We're fully staffed. Here's our thought on this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but EMS is sitting over there. There's days they don't get any calls at all, there's days they're jam-packed full. If we need help, say, extra hands, we can find them, but sometimes they're sitting over there getting paid, not really doing a whole lot, no offense, but they're not on-call, they're doing their paperwork or whatever, whatever they have to do. But they're getting their hourly wage. They, we call them over and they help us, they can help with anything. They're a great asset to us, we'll be fine without them.
A question, do we have what the total hours are that EMS spends in the emergency room? Like on a monthly basis, is that a stat that you keep?
I don't think that's a stat we keep.
No, that's not a stat we keep. It's very interesting, right? Because we do the same thing with the doctors. They also have a place that they stay for the duration that they're there. They're also getting paid on their time off. And I think, you know, EMS has never been shy about going over and helping at any given moment. Whenever we've, the ER has needed anything, we have jumped in, feet-first, never, never held back. The sickest of patients, we're over there helping, and even when they're not sick, we're over there, even if we need to toss a bed for them, so, I mean.
I agree. EMS has been great for twelve years, for almost six years since I have been here. They have been a part of our team and they have done whatever we've we've needed. We have tried to help them, they've tried to help, I I mean, we function as a team.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the idea because Hope said that you're fully staffed. And I'm just, I mean, do you do you feel that it's a sparse amount of time you spend over there? It's a significant amount of time spent.
There's really no way to gauge it right now. It's it's a day-to-day thing, really. Like I said, sometimes we're over there for all day and half the night. Sometimes, as sometimes the ER doesn't have anything, we're not over there as much. So I think it's kind of hard to gauge. Thank you.
So.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Deborah Cardoza, I have a question as far as the pay.
Can you come to the front? We're speaking a little louder, just, we have a hard time recording you, so, I apologize.
That's all right. The problem that I have is I don't see why Lander County EMS is paying for employees that are on the clock for EMS to be working in the ER. Shouldn't the hospital be paying that portion of the payroll?
Jason? Right now, right now, I don't want to look at this separately. Lander County EMS is, they're paid by the hospital. They're functioning under the the name of Lander County EMS, but they're hired and paid by the hospital. They're hospital employees. And so when they're across the street, the hospital's paying for them. When they're in the ER, the hospital's paying for them right now. If there was a divide, then that's when the, I think the question is more valid of if if the Lander County EMS, under the operation of Lander County, if they come into the hospital, are we willing to pay them at that point? I think that's, right now, they're our employees and we're trying to utilize our resources to the best of our ability, trying to make it as efficient as possible. We love having the EMS. We'd hate to see him go, but we would continue to have a good relationship. Mike's still my buddy, we'll still try to go golfing every once in a while. But we would, they would be under a separate employment. I think that's, I don't, I don't want to mix this up. Lander County EMS in the north, I'll say in the north, they're our employees. They're hired by Battle Mountain General Hospital and we pay them. So we utilize them however we can, wherever we can, to be efficient. And so I don't know if that answers your question. If there is a separation, then we'll have to address that.
Yes, ma'am.
In part, what I'm asking is, I was a forensic accountant for quite some time. And the problem I'm having with this is that now EMS is being paid by, through, the hospital is being paid by contract, okay, to perform services with the EMS. They are utilizing EMS to go over to the hospital and perform functions there of a hospital employee. That should come out of the hospital itself, not out of a contract done for EMS. The other thing is, the, during the time that the the EMTs, paramedics, whoever is over there, they're performing functions, intubation, et cetera, on these patients. The hospital is currently, I believe, getting reimbursed as though the hospital was performing these functions. They're not. It's the EMTs, EMS, that is performing these functions. So why is that income not being sent to the EMS side rather than the hospital side?
I agree with you completely, and that's kind of where I was going with my question as far as the it being staticized of like, what time are we spending there? So you could, you can differentiate, it's real very, very simple. It's like, this is what we spent in this month, and it's, it's, yes, it's easily calculable. But we have to staticize, and I can see why it would be a benefit not to staticize it because I can see that the hospital does benefit from it, looking at it in terms of how the lady just presented it, so.
So I guess, and to kind of circle back for everybody, the the concern that I have is where negotiations kind of came to a deadhead is is in Jason's proposal, these things that we have to get with this new license with the state, new provider identification, new insurance, fiduciary liability, and malpractice insurance, medical direction, clinical and billing, and medical supply chain management, the them are all things that we have to, we take in to maintain a service in Austin. Regardless if we agree, if we agreed to the three hundred thousand and and leaving the service over here at the hospital in a in a long-term agreement, we still have to provide all these things for a service in Austin that I don't know is is a fair shake for the community members. At the end of the day, like Jason said, it's it's a it's a Lander County thing. It's not a hospital, it's not a Lander County. It's it's Lander County and the and the citizens that are paying, no matter if I give Jason the check or Jason gives me the check, it's all the same difference. It's Lander County taxpayers paying the bill. So when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at it as just a taxpayer paying the bill, regardless of where it goes or how how it's cut and how we're gonna provide the best service to that taxpayer. Making sure that we're fully staffed, making sure that when somebody's called that we can respond and not paying for double of everything in order to do that. And this kind of seconds a layer of everything in order to do that when I just don't know that that's the the best shake for for us as a as a county or even the hospital for that matter. I mean, I I guess if I was on Jason's side, I think it's a better deal. But if he was on my side, he'd probably think it's a better deal, so that can go either way. And I don't know, you know, how the EMTs feel about it or what their what their thoughts are on how everything is or where everything should be or or the management. I know, Jason, you've talked about the being everybody kind of seamless and in the years that I've been here, it's been fairly seamless that I'm aware of. I know that ever since we took over the Austin EMS, that that's the only time that it's it's been a functional, seamless operation. You guys do a hundred percent of the billing, you guys receive a hundred percent of the the proceeds from any of the calls that they get, which aren't, which aren't many, even though we're paying a hundred percent of the employees and the equipment and everything else. And a and a small stipend, I think, of four thousand or so a month, I think, that we we pay additionally on top of that contractually for Austin, correct? Out of that ten thousand that we pay a month, I think four or six of that is for Austin.
In the contract, it doesn't separate anything for Austin versus it's just ten thousand flat. I didn't know, if you guys budget it that way on your side, I didn't know of that.
Okay. You know, so that's, when when we started these these negotiations, we both wanted to build our own negotiating teams. Jason had his ideas on what he thought was a good team for him. I had my ideas on what I thought was a good team for me. Jason didn't really prefer my team. I never really got to see his team much. I know that there was, I was under the impression that it was gonna be Mikey, Hope, and I'm not sure who else was there. After me and Jason's first meeting, it was it was clear that that we were not going to be able to meet with teams. I'm not the guy for hospital negotiations, I don't know much about hospitals. So it's all, I'm basing this off of is numbers and looking at this as it from a very far view with not a lot of knowledge. And that's why I think it's best right here in an open meeting, everybody can kind of iron it out.
Why, answer me this, why wasn't our negotiating teams able to come together? I didn't understand that.
A conflict of of individuals that that Jason preferred on the negotiating team or did not prefer, I guess I should say. I'm trying to keep from being combative here, but.
We could have brought teams together, but there was a question in the beginning about individuals. And we needed to, I shared with them my my feelings.
But if you put your team together and Bert put his team together, that's the whole point of the negotiating team, is to come together, try to work out the best four, right? So so basically, what we're saying is that because, so basically, Bert didn't like somebody on your team or you didn't like somebody on your, on Bert's team, that's why it's in front of us, because you guys couldn't.
Let me clarify, you, you guys are my bosses, let me clarify right now. I will negotiate with anybody, anywhere, anytime.
I could, I would only think, right, I mean, if I was negotiating something for myself, I would, I'd want to pick my team, people that I felt represented my best interests. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm having a hard time just.
I think he had his team, or he had a team in his background because when when information was requested or or moved along, it went to somebody in his team, and I had my team. And the negotiation and the conversation was back and forth between Bert and I as the leaders of both entities. We, he and I. uh, as the leaders of both entities. We, he and I directly communicated, but I'm sure that.
So, there wasn't a problem with the teams?
On, on his side, I'm sure he had his people that he was working with. On my side, I had mine that I was working with.
Okay, we're beyond, we're beyond the teams now, and it's gonna be our decision, right? So, I just wanna say that I do think that it certainly was one of the best things for Austin to have our permanent employees and volunteers, and that has worked very well for us. Um, yes, you can't put them in the ER, and you can't call them, that's true. So, that's why we decided we would pay them outside of your ten thousand dollars. But we basically thought they were under the direction of, of Lander County EMS, and they did their, um, their continuing education and everything all through your director. The only difference was they were paid because Austin needed definitely service down there. And, and people say, well, Austin's so small. Yes, we do a lot of medical calls. We really do. Uh, it's interesting. But the biggest thing is Highway fifty is a federal highway, and we have a lot of accidents. I can't believe our numbers. I just, I cannot. And I know that we have had more calls than this, so I don't know where the breakdown is, and at this point, I don't even care where the breakdown is. I just know that we do a lot, and, and we need them down there. And, um, you have to remember that, that Southern Lander County also pays on our taxes for that hospital. And we may not use you to come into your hospital always. Um, some of us do, but some go the other way. But, it still is part of your responsibility to take care of Southern Lander County too. And, and however we decide to do this, it's like, our biggest mandate for commissioners is to provide that service. We've got to have an EMS service, and that's our responsibility. And years ago, it was all volunteer. Lander County handled it, and we thought it would work well with the hospital, and apparently it's not. So, um, I would like to get some input from the paramedics and the EMTs that are here, if anyone wants to share that.
Okay, hold on one second. So, before you rudely cut me off, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, you said it was enough with the team and all this, but I was still, and there were some questions based around that, so, so, you had a question, ma'am?
Well, I did have one question. I was the glitch as far as the county's, um, negotiating team, because the hospital didn't wanna work with me. I wanted to be on the team, and I had talked to you about it also, because I was part and parcel when they first developed the relationship between the county and the hospital for EMT services. And I thought I had something to offer, and I still do. However, regardless of that, I'm a little confused about the, the community that you pulled together, Jason, because there was not a doctor on it. There was not an EMT on it. There was a clinic manager who's brand-new to this community, and I don't understand why he was on it. I certainly understand Hope, and I understand HR, but I don't understand not having people in the know, working with it, who have really big contributions that can make as far as information goes. That's one thing. The second thing is, you'll never convince me that we cannot break this out, this contract out in an audit, and even if the hospital can have its own, um, reporting system for EMS services, they should have it. They certainly have the equipment that's capable of doing it. So, to say that there's no way that you can have that as part of the audit, the county has many, many different, um, entities and funds, and the hospital has in the past, and they could.
Okay, so, thank you. So.
The hospital would have to provide the input, or the EMTs would have to provide the input. But there is a way of pulling all that together so that everyone is on the same page, and you're not asking questions about what's this and what's that, and where's the documentation for this, and that's a nightmare.
I'm not trying to drive a wedge in here, being combative or any more than, but, but just for everybody to be aware, my idea of us negotiating, uh, was to bring everybody to the table. And I say I'm not the guy to have at the table negotiating for you. It's, have me sitting across from Jason isn't very good negotiation, but if we bring in whoever Jason had on, on his, you know, Hope and whoever else he wanted to bring in the room, and we all sit down in the room, and everybody's having discussion like we're having today. Then you come to, I like, for example, I had no clue that we, the, Jason and them guys had, had come up with some wage scales for people. I did not, I was unaware of that. Um, I was made aware that there were some insurance changes, but I wasn't aware that there was a wage scale, and I asked for that to be, um, you know, outlined in a contract. Here's some wage scales we're gonna be working off of in a contract, because if that sort of stuff ever came back to us, we'd want something that was established similar to what we would hopefully be paying. Um, that way, we wouldn't, we could potentially keep the same employees and not have that kinda turnover, people that have familiarity and other things like that. But I wa- I was unaware of a wage scale or anything working like that. And that's so, so, to Jason's point, me and him, yes, we have, I have a whole stack of emails here that we went back and forth with each other on. Um, and collectively had people we were talking to to try to see if these were fair. However, that is not what I had in mind when I was thinking negotiating. I was thinking everybody would come in, sit down in the room. We would have this discussion we're having here today. Um, and then come back with everybody on the same page, EMS, um, hospital, myself, and say, this is what we have for you guys. How do you feel about it? Um, here's a couple sticking points for us. Here's a couple sticking points for them. You guys, you know, being the ultimate authority in this, you tell us if this is a go or not. Um, that hasn't happened, and that's kinda why we're here, so.
Ryan, Ryan, can we make sure that anybody that's coming up to ask a question actually comes up to the mic and speaks up, because they cannot hear them when they're asking the question?
Okay, one second, Marla. I have something to say, and then I'll call you up next. Um, I, I do agree with Kathy, and that was with some, with some of my points I was going to make, where the, so the separate audits and the financials were a non-negotiable term for you, which those two things are nothing more than transparency, and I would think that would make for a healthier relationship. I, I don't understand why you wouldn't want that. And the financials that I've seen, Jason, or the, the, you know, just the basic, uh, income and loss were just very just basic nutshell, and we know things are a lot more in-depth than, than what was presented to us. So, that was, I told Bert I had concern with that. So, I did talk to Bert about Kathy being on part of that team, and for the basic reason, she knew the working details of the hospital and maybe the expenses, so we could, because when we're dealing with this, and I look at it, I want all the facts and figures. This is not part of them, and then operate off, well, we're a collective. When we need to work as a team. Those, those are all important words, and I agree with it, but we need to get down to the details of everything that we're, we're looking at. And for, and then for you to say that we shouldn't have separate audits, or, or you don't want the financials, I, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's healthy.
I don't want there to be any misunderstanding. EMS is audited every year.
Right.
As one of our, um, service lines. Every single year, it's audited. We don't pay a separate audit amount to peel them out. But, as far as all the, the expenses and the, the, the revenues, the write-offs, everything, that's all been audited. It's factual, um, information that's been through the, the mi- the eyeglass of, of an auditing system, or an auditing term. I, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding there. So, the, the, the financial statement that we would send to you on a monthly basis, that, at that time, it's not go- run through an auditor, but by the end of the year, it will be run through the auditor, and any corrections or whatever would be made. But that is our best, our best go at it. Um, so, there is an audit.
Okay.
But what I understood was the question is, am, am I willing to separate that out and create a s- totally separate audit? And I thought, why? I don't understand why. It's all, it's all in the process, and it's all under that price that we pay.
Hey, Brokeen, will you come up here first?
Hold, hold on one second, Kathy. We had, we had, we had, yes.
Can, can I make one more statement really quick?
Marla, I'm sorry.
One minute. I want to address Patsy, uh, and your statement before, uh, we go much further. The Southern County is important. This, my proposal, I don't want it misunderstood. I don't want the Southern County to go away, the Southern EMS to go away. They're very, very important. What this came down to is liability. Is that, uh, and I'll just use just a, a hypothetical. If, if one of the EMTs or volunteers down in Austin made a drastic mistake, negligent mistake in their care, and there were lawsuits, the county has no responsibility.
Hold on one second. Is that, is that a true statement? Because that was, I, because we have our own insurance coverage. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They're, they're, they're our employee. They're covered under our liability insurance, so I'm, I'm not.
For medical malpractice?
May- maybe I'm missing.
We have medical malpractice.
Through PoolPact?
Yes.
You might wanna check on that. PoolPact does not provide medical malpractice.
Yes, they do, for our providers.
That's new to me then. But, that, that was the separation that I, I didn't have any opportunity to, to mitigate my liability in that area. If there was an employee that was breaking our policies or the protocols that were established through medical direction, we don't have any opportunity to go back to that EMT or that volunteer and say, you're reprimanded. We, you gotta go on suspension. We'd have to, that would have to be something that the county did. Um, so, these are some of the, the liabilities and, and areas that we need to kinda clear up. Right now, we carry the license for it. So, if something goes wrong, I carry that liability on that license. Um, and so, if we're going to separate, we need to deal with that separation. Right now, we're just kinda quasi-separated. I wanna keep, I wanna keep, uh, EMS down in, in Austin. I'm not saying that we, we do away with it or anything, or Lander, or, or the hospital doesn't want anything to do with. No, that's not what I'm saying. I think we just need to clarify the lines of liability, the lines of, of, um, I guess, responsibility.
I didn't think you wanted to do away with, and what I'm saying is, um, that you still have a responsibility to those taxpayers who are paying for Battle Mountain Hospital, and where did you plan to, to take care of that? I guess that's what I was looking for. But the interesting thing is, um, and, and I'm sure that our DA can comment on it, um, if something happens even here with your employees, Lander County will probably get sued right along with everybody else. I mean, that's the way it works. They sue everybody they can. So, we're not off the hook, even though you think you're carrying all of it too.
Yes, we, so we have the, they have, we have all the vehicles, so we have an equal liability, and some of these things is, is on.
Okay, uh, uh, Marla? Sorry, that took so long to get to you.
Yeah, sure. Marla, Marla, stand for the record. Um, I just, I, I just think it's really interesting, uh, about this negotiation thing. I keep, I'm sorry, I'm beating a dead horse probably, but, you know, I was a negotiator for the union for, for many, many, many years here. And we had our teams. We had our head negotiators. We had our teams. We went in a room, we negotiated, went back to the table. Only the two head negotiators ever spoke, ever. We didn't even be there sometimes. So, I don't know why you think it's a good deal to get twelve people, ten people, five people together, and hash that out with both sides in there. It is not productive. You get nowhere. That's why you have your head people. He can have whoever he wants on his team. We can have whoever we want on our team. The two people can come together, negotiate, and all of this other crap shouldn't even be mentioned.
Yeah, I hear, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I, and I don't know the logistics of how the negotiation went down.
But that's how it should go.
Right.
And then I have a question too. You're saying, you know, that the hospital responsibility. Okay, you have a Lander County i- person who comes and works at your shop. County pays for his wages, pays for this, does that. He does something at your shop, and you have nothing that you can say or do about it.
Just for the record.
Well, I'm just making it up. Fake shop. You work there. But as an employer, former, would you allow that?
Ask me the question again.
Okay, would you allow someone to just come in that works for somebody else, comes in and works for you, and you have nothing whatsoever to say about anything that man does on that job?
That just depends upon the contract that we draw up. It's all about contracts. No, it's all about contracts.
Okay.
And I know, I know large.
So, why would you not want to be in charge of that person if he's under your umbrella?
I, I've had people workforce in the past that I didn't have to say it.
Okay, and you thought that was okay. Did anything happen?
What's that?
Did anything happen?
No.
Okay, what, what, something would've happened? I mean, you know, we're just playing apples.
Yeah, we're just playing hypothetical here. I mean, it's, it's, it's very simple. Manpower. You hire somebody from Manpower. They have their, I mean, if you have a problem, you don't address that employee. You call Manpower, say, I don't want him back. They handle it. They're there to provide the work. I don't have power over it, but I sign that away when I pay them and sign that contract.
Okay. So, you think that's okay for that to be, we're all one, one wheel. Takes all the spokes to make the wheel go around. Everybody needs to make the wheel go around. Why can we not just be one?
I, I have a question.
Why do we have to have a northern cell? So, why cannot they be paid by the hospital, answer to the hospital, because they don't like this?
Okay, Kim, one second.
Have we had any of these issues that were, I mean, I've, I've never had a call from Jason saying, Bert, I have a major issue with one of your employees. I've never not had one call that I've been aware of since I've been here from Jason saying, we have an employee problem. These are all very hypothetical. Um, unless Jason's aware of one, I'm not aware of a call that Jason's made to me saying, I have an issue with your employee, and you better handle something.
I've had a couple of calls from the south.
Okay, because I've never had one from Jason to me.
I have never had a call.
Okay, I've had a couple of calls from people down there that I know, and they complain, and I just say, I'm sorry, there's nothing I can do about it. You need to call Bert. He is the boss. If they don't choose to call you, or Patsy, or whatever, I don't know if they just call me because I just look like a grandma and everybody wants to tell me their problems. I don't know. But, you know, we have, and there is.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just telling you, is, is all I can say is that, I can just speak from my experience, and my experience is I've never had Jason pick up the call and say, Bert, we have an issue we gotta get dealt with. And, and if that is, if that had ever arisen, I'm sure me and Jason would've went and sat down together and figured out exactly where we were going with it, but I've.
Next time I get a call, I'll be, I'll call you personally.
Yeah, no, I, well, and I, I mean, honestly, that's a day-to-day thing, so that'd be something that Jason would do with me. If, but Jason's the one that would be, you know, I'm just sa- saying that it feels to me like we're, we're quite a ways off, off course here from what, what the reality of where it is and how it's been.
I just think that these are the questions that people in the community ask. I mean, I hear it all the time. So, I'm just thinking, this is ridiculous that we have, after all this time, and all this back and forth, that we have not got a contract yet. And we take a loss every month at the hospital on the EMS, a huge loss, every month. And we are willing to do that, and we are willing to do whatever, but why is this being so hard? I do not understand why this has to be as hard as this has been. Because, you know, time is marching on, and the longer we wait, the worse it gets. Jason's doing a fine job, a wonderful job. The EMS people do wonderful jobs. Everybody does their job. Bert does his job. Everybody does, but, you know, it, it's just a matter of a couple of little things that, uh, I mean, why can we not just come to an agreement? It's, it's just silly to me.
Okay, well, thank you, Marla.
It's been going on too long. Time to do it.
I appreciate it, man. Kim, do you have a question? Uh, we'll get that, and Kathy, we'll get back to you, and, okay.
I just wanna clarify that, Kim shot for the record. Um, in the beginning, when I started here nine-something years ago, um, we were paid by the hospital a stipend, okay, which was a hundred dollars. It was the hospital board that decided to take away our stipend. And that is why the county picked up our stipend, because we only had two volunteers, and at that time, I worked it in, Dot. It was expected for me to leave my job and just go strictly volunteer, which I did, but that took up my whole day. I, I was at a loss for money. Um, a hundred dollar stipend was not a lot to ask. That stipend was cut by the hospital first and foremost when their employees were working forty-eight hour shift with eight hours built-in overtime. But the first thing they wanted to cut was our stipend, and that came through Rick Bell, and I love Rick Bell to death. However, that's where we butted heads, and, um, Keith was the one that said, county will pay your stipend. We have never not worked under the director of EMS. I mean, we've always been one service and worked cohesively. I don't understand who made the division, because it certainly wasn't us. I mean, we are EMS as far as we're concerned, and we always have been, and we've worked under every director that we've had. The only difference is we were paid by the county. Um, we have always, we've had to sign the protocols through the hospital and work the same protocols as EMS does daily, and if there was any problem, our director would come to us and let us know. There's never been a major problem, but our directors have been very thorough. They would come down, let us know of any updates. We would get faxes. Since, for the last five years, things have slowly been cut. Since, for the last five years, things have slowly been cut off, we don't have any contact with the hospital in, anymore. We used to have BMGH emails, we were treated just like an employee. Um, that's how we were hired, we did all of our training at the hospital there, or in the, the building over there. EMS did a lot of the education, um, I have taught there myself. I don't understand why everybody says that, you know, I mean, we're split, cause we have always worked as cohesively as we can. Um, a- as a citizen, I would just ask, um, the loss. The hospital keeps saying they show this huge loss, I would just like to see the actual loss, what's, what are, what are they losing? I mean, cause you can't separate it out, cause it's a hospital deal, or whatever, where is EMS losing money, is what I would like to know? Is it because of our, because it can't be because of our wages, I mean, cause we get paid an average wage, um. If you had to staff the, um, EMS down in Austin and pay our wages, of course it will be a loss probably, you know, I mean, be, but you collect all of the income off our calls, but we're being paid by the county. I, I, I would just like to see the loss as a citizen, what, what is the loss, I mean, specifically?
Every month in the hospital board packet is a financial sheet. That shows revenues versus expenses and the bottom line. I can show you exactly, um, where on those. Either revenues are too low, or there's too much contractual adjustment, or bad debt, or expenses are too high. And that's gonna ebb and flow de- depending on volumes. If we have a big volume month. And we collect all of it, we have a good, a good positive month. If we have low volume month, and we don't collect what we were able to.
Is that, so specifically, I'm asking, is the expensive, the profit and loss, is that specifically shown? Whether it comes from not collecting, or, um, too much overtime this month because we didn't have enough employees, or did how things go up, is that specifically shown?
Break it down that specific, but it shows employment expense, um, wage and salary, it shows office supplies or, or medical supplies, all those different things.
And that, that is out there for public record?
Yeah, every month.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim. Kathy?
So, my question for the audit part, um, Rogean, if you could answer this for me. For like, the county, we have all the line items, you have the sheriff's office line item that has, you know. E- everything broke down, yes, and then you have road and bridge, and you have water and sewer and so on. So what is the difference with the hospital doing that same thing? That where they, it's, it's coded and everything that goes to EMS, so then you can see all the revenues specifically for EMS and all of the expenditures for EMS.
Right, right, because we have a cost report that we get on a monthly basis. That breaks down if it's a different fund. That gives you your revenues, your expenses, and at the end of the day, you know if it's.
And it's gonna tell you whether it's the sheriff's department, we are collecting on housing, inmate housing, or we're paying out for medical.
And I think one of the questions that I'm hearing is there's, uh, people have issues with EMS or the department versus working at the emergency. You know, they're, they fill in. The way we always did in the county is we, during payroll, we would, based on the hours. It would be distributed to that direct fund, if you will. And, so I, and then I'm listening to Jason, and I understand that it's all in one. You know, that it's the hospital, we as a county were a contract with the hospital. But I see where the concern is, it's not really a true cost if it's not broke out. If that makes sense.
Yes.
So, any other questions, comments, public? Yes.
Well, I just wanted to say, you are able to create another department within the hospital accounting firm that does the audit, we used to, Jason. Because we asked and we explained why we needed to have it. You can also set up that department within your own financials. And have a readout of it every month, so that everyone's on the same page and they know what it is. It's just a matter of. Okay, you've got the EMT that are taking care of all the, the runs. And so their input is vital to that. The hospital is, who's doing the billing, Jason?
For EMS?
Yes.
A group named Sharps Incorporated.
Sharps Incorporated?
I think Sharps, is it incorporated?
I just know of Sharps.
They're out of Sacramento.
That could be.
And their focus is on EMS billing.
All of the expenses, all of the, the revenue.
It is.
All of the activity on that account, the hospital could build their own account. And there would be a monthly report for everyone on the same page.
Thank you, Kathy. Jason, did, Marla had a question, do you wanna ask?
There is a monthly report, it's its own separate department. Every month, we generate a prof- a profit and loss. That's based against, uh, that, that goes against the budget that's, that's, uh, approved. Um, if we wanted to have a separate audit, it would be like, um. If we wanted a separate aud- audit of the EMS, we have to pay for it. And I don't understand what the benefit is going to be when to pay an extra ten to fifteen thousand dollars for a separate audit. When it's part of our current audit, and the corrections are made, and the department, any adjustments are accrued to that department. And so it shows up, uh. I don't understand that.
I, I'm not talking about a separate audit, I'm talking about a separate department within the audit.
Like a different line item?
A different line item that would automatically be a part of your normal audit, that's not gonna cost you an extra ten thousand dollars.
Not a separate audit.
It's not a separate audit.
You're just saying fine tuning the, the act, you're fine tuning your financial with a, uh, another one or two line items.
There's a lot of money being exchanged.
No, exactly, that was, and that was kinda my point in the very beginning, it's like, that has to be trackable, so, Marla, you had a question?
So what is it that you want more than what you need each month?
Or speak up, as, just, sorry.
A separate financial, a separate department financial.
Okay, so we give you, we give you every month what we get at the board. It has, like Jason said, everything on it, so what are you wanting? Michael made ten runs, Joe made three runs, John made one run, is that what you're wanting?
That'd be a start, yeah, so we can see actual time spent.
But if they turn, but if, if, but I'm not understanding why you would need all of that, all of that when they get paid this much money, I mean, I'm not understanding why you want that to be. I, 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 explain it to me, I'm not getting it.
Do you have a question, Rogean?
No, I, I think that it's very important to see the cost of the department. You have to know, because you go on a lot of runs, some of them are billable, some are not. And then I understand the write-offs, because you have Medicare, uh, Medicaid that you get zip hardly anything on. So, it's not a moneymaker, if you will. But, just like with Austin, because I've been overviewing the county just the last couple of weeks. We, and I think with them, they're not divided, they get ten thousand a month from us every month. In our budget, four thousand comes from Austin, and six thousand comes from the Battle Mountain ambulance. One of the first things that I saw is, to me, that wages, everything should've been covered under the contract, if you will. I don't know what happened that Austin, we're paying for the Austin. Which is fine, but in that contract. It's inclusive of supplies. And then I'm seeing now that Austin, whenever they're buying supplies through the hospital. They do get a discount. But to me, that should, should be included within that contract. They shouldn't have to be dinged for buying supplies, because that's part of the contract. They furnish the supplies, I think basically the county was to uh, do the maintenance on the vehicles, if we needed a new ambulance, we would buy the new ambulance. And the contract, pretty, pretty simple, and we did all the maintenance on the vehicles. That was the contract.
To answer your question, Marla, I, and I might be the wrong guy to ask, I'm a staff freak, I, I like numbers, and it's like, in the tire store, I could've just said, how many tires they sell? No, it was what size, what category did they fall under, what, uh, type of customer did it go to, I mean, I, and the reason why is knowledge is power. I can drive a better machine with the more information that I have.
But I, I think we have to be careful too when we start, you know, the ambulance. I don't know how you, you could do everything, or, I mean, it's like you want your own separate to be separate from the hospital and have their own little business thing going on the side. Why, we get everything we need every month, I mean, we know that. How many runs do they make? It doesn't matter how many runs they make, because they run or they don't run, they get paid this much money, we get this much money, we go in the hole this much money.
But I'd argue with that point, because I'd wanna know, it's like, we ran this month, we ran this month, and it was the same amount this month, but this month we lost money, this month we didn't, why? Unless we, unless we collect the data, we can't answer that why, that why is important to future business success. Did you have a question?
No, I was just gonna speak to what Marla had asked about, uh, Lake and Sullivan for the record, so when you're asking what they're wanting to see, they're talking about your annual audit that we all have to do and provide to Department of Taxation. For the counties, it's broken out by department, so it's not by employee, it's by salaries and wages, employee benefits and service and supplies, which is the rest of your operating. You can see how much each department spends every year on their operations, and it's broke out by those three categories. In the hospital's financial audit that I looked at, you can't see anything, it's just all one number. For your operations, it's not broke out by your clinic, your long-term care, your ER, your EMS. So it'd be nice to see how much you're spending on EMS, and also how much revenue you're bringing in.
But that's on that report you get every month?
Where is that posted? Cause I looked on your hospital website, and all that's on there is your agendas.
It's, it's in the financial packet every month.
It's in the financial packet every month.
By department?
But, but where do you post that at? Do you post that for, you said that it's available to the public to see? Is it on your website, or?
I think so.
Cause all that's on there is your agendas.
It's, it's available upon request, I, I'll have to check to verify if it's online.
But regardless, your auditors can break out your audit however you ask them to, so, right now, it's just all being reported. One hospital revenue and expenses, but you can have it broke out by department.
Mike?
So, I'll, so I relate to Brian on the fact of in my trade, we have cost centers. So I want every price broke down to a piece of equipment. Can we take this piece down to, what I see is, everybody wants, what's the two costs of the ambulance versus bulked into the ho- you know, the hospital finances? This piece, you know, is, is this expenses for supplies, this is, this is employees? It, it's staffing, it's, it's equipment, it's the, you know, the, the, the county have to tie in with the maintenance or that. But is it broke down enough to say, here is our true cost and our expenses of just the ambulance? With nothing combined, not the, the ER room, or, or, or whatever, I wanna know exactly, like Brian said, I wanna. I have to have my costs down to exactly this piece of equipment, this department. I, you know, I have plants broke down to separate pieces, every section of, of recovery is broke down to a certain cost. More than just a bulk, I, 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 it's, it's not just a bulk listing, but this would be this section, this is what, what, what the EMT part of it, the ambulance, all that, the cost there. Is it broke down on that report enough to where it's broke down to say like? You got, I know you have emergency room, you know, is it's billable, paid, you know, costs? Is the ambulance broke off of that, or is it built into the costs, just one small section, this is the profit of the ambulance, this is the loss of the ambulance?
In our monthly report that we put out, it's broken down like a profit and loss statement. The top is your revenues, the bottom is your expenses, uh, given a bottom line. Now, it doesn't go into all the detail, we bought forty-five nasal cannulas, we bought this many Ambu bags. We could break it, we could get that information, but the report that we put out is a basic profit and loss statement.
So, do we do that? I, I mean, you have to have it broke down somewhere in your budget, if this is this department, this is the cost of law. I, I mean, that, 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 to me, is what everybody's asking, is what? What is the true cost, not just a bulk list, but, but what it is, I mean, it has to be coming in. Certainly, some, somewhere along the line, there's an employee breaking his costs down, make sure that, to verify, this goes to the ambulance, this goes to the to the deal, that, that, that I think is what, it makes the numbers easier to see.
You have a question, ma'am, or a comment?
Democrat goes up. Um, I think with the, what we're, where we're butting heads is that there is a P and L, and there is an audit. A P and L pretty much says whatever the heck you want it to say. An audit breaks things down and gives you exactly what it is you're looking at. You're either looking at a photo, or you're looking at a crayon drawing. And what we want is a photo, we wanna see, we want disclosure, we wanna know where the money is going. Um, Austin, everything's being paid by the county, and all of the profit is going to the hospital. So I don't see how we're costing them anything. I would like to see, not a P and L, I would like to see an audit.
Thank you. Yes, let's take, let's take a fifteen minute break. Thank you.
Muted. This conference is no longer. Unmuted.
Okay, guys, so we'll go back to the meeting here.
Conference will now be recorded.
Alright, so we're back at it, uh, where did we leave off? Um, did, were there any more questions, comments? Um, I think there was a question on, uh. Mike had a question that, is there more time to, now that we've had this open forum and both sides kinda know what is needed and wanted? Is there, is there room or time to further negotiate? Or is it a budgetary issue, is there, is there willingness to continue to negotiate? I mean, where are we at?
I, from my perspective, and I'm not sure where Jason is, I think that we've pretty much, we've pretty much come to the point where we're in front of our boards, I think, I don't know. Um, I think that it sounds like either we take the three hundred thousand and, uh, and some of, uh, what Jason's offered or we, uh, take it back, one of the, one of the two. But I don't know, unless you guys have a different direction to give to me, and I'll take that direction anywhere, I, one thing we haven't done is I've not, um, I wanna put some rumors to rest. You know how Battle Mountain is in rumors, um, or Lander County in general, small communities, um. And I've heard that we aren't even running a fully staffed service, I don't know if that's true, I think that that's false, but, um, you know. I think it's important for the community to know what kinda service we are running, where we stand, and, and why that is. Just for the, just for the sake of this whole meeting, it just puts everybody, especially myself out there in the public, for everybody to hear, this is where we stand, this is what our staffing is, um. I know that at times we've been short-staffed, right now, I think that they're fully staffed, and I don't know of anywhere right now that you can go, minus Ungar and the Sheriff's Department that's fully staffed. Or very close to, it's hard to find employees, uh, employees these days, so, um. So I'm not saying this is a, as a, as a knock anywhere, I'm just saying it is part of the record for, for that, and if Jason wants to speak to that or if the EMS wants to speak to whoever, but I just want it to be out there, cause I'm not sure where that stands.
Jason Blake for the record, and, uh, you know, the EMT crews can, can verify this. Um, we, we always struggle with staffing in different areas, different departments. Are there areas that need to be staffed right now? Yes, there are. But are we filling the schedules? Yes, we are. Uh, are we, are we managing the runs appropriately? Yes, we are. I don't think, I know of any run that has not been managed appropriately, appropriate. that has not been managed appropriate, appropriately by certified technicians or paramedics, um, to this point. Have we met all the needs in the community?
Hi, Keres. Uh, what, sorry, what was the original question?
Were you fully staffed?
Uh, no. Um, we have a, well, uh, we are now, when I stepped away from being the director, back into a paramedic position. So I filled that role and then we are supposed to have a new hire coming on as an EMT. So when that comes on sometime next month, then we'll have, uh, our opening will be, uh, in the director position and we will be staffed again.
What, you know, what kind of turnover rate does the EMS have, paramedic service on?
Uh, we, we turn over probably the entire department every two, two to three years.
And in the industry, is that a high turnover or does that just come with the industry?
I think it ebbs and flows as, as certain agencies catch up, just like, um, you know, five years ago, we were one of the highest paid agencies, so we're able to keep people a little bit more. As, as the other agencies around us, the flight agencies, the fire agencies, Humble, Elko, have, as they expanded and, um, increased their wages after their wage studies, they have had a pretty solid success rate with keeping people. Elko County in specific just did a wage study. They bumped their paramedics. Their starting rate is twenty-seven. They have, uh, fifty-six hour work weeks generally and they pay all that overtime, like Jason said. Right? The number is inflated, but they are guaranteed that number, they are guaranteed that money, that overtime. Um, and they went from having like a forty percent staffing shortage to they have no open shifts now.
So would you, did I hear you correct, the main reason for turnover, turnover was wages?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, every, everybody here is doing this, you know, they, they love what they do, they love to serve the community, but at the end of the day, we're paying our mortgage, we're feeding our kids with this, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, there was a question. Yeah, Marla?
Martha Sanford for the record. I, since we're putting rumors to rest, I've had a couple of people ask me if you guys are wanting to take the EMS back because you're gonna build a, a paid for, uh, fire department, that you could build a new fire department and, and have a paid fireman at, with the EMS.
Well, I can speak directly to that because I had one volunteer fire department member who is my nephew, Damon Green, ask me that specific question. I'm like, uh, no, where did you hear that from? The expense to do something like that, I don't know. I just, I just kind of told my position as commissioner. So I'm not sure where that originated from and I did talk to our county manager to see if he heard where it originated from. But yeah, not, not to my knowledge.
Hundred percent untrue.
Yeah. Um, did you have a question, Kat, Ms. Cathy?
I did. During the break, I asked Bert and I asked the board if they received a monthly printout from the hospital and no, they do not. So that monthly printout for the EMS must go to your board, Jason?
Yes.
It does not, the, this board does not get one and Bert does not get one?
Not at this point. In this proposal that I put together, that's one of those.
Is that like this and it's got the rooms and, um, it's got your expenses and your revenue and how many you bill for?
Sure.
That by contract was in, that was in the contract for at least a quarterly report that would go to the commission, since they do have a financial obligation in this whole contract. And that's what's always bothered me is that they don't get one. Phil was good about giving them one to begin with and then he started adding all of the ambulance runs. I don't know if anyone's here and will remember. And the county, and that's when they had in the, and I don't know if the contract passed that now, but if there's an overage, if there's a really good, um, revenue time, then the county would pay the hospital or the hospital would pay the county.
And I believe that's still, yeah, that's still there. If we break over even.
The county said, we're all getting rich because by according to Phil Hannah's report, they were billing for a hundred and fifty-two ambulance runs a month. When in fact, they were building, they were only billing about forty-one of them. So that was a huge difference. And Phil just stopped his reports to the county. And as far as I know, the county's never had another report, but by contract, it says that the hospital will provide at least a quarterly report with all of this information on it. And Marla, I did understand your question about another thing. One of the reasons that I think it's really important that you have this is because we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. And the taxpayers deserve to know where their money is going, how it's being spent. And they can come in and ask at any time and you'd be hard put to give them some good, solid answers because you don't have them. And so I think there are some real improvements that can be made.
I think that's a false statement. We do have them. If the public came in and asked for some stuff, we could give it to them.
If they came in and asked you for it, but the county couldn't give it to them, Jason, because they don't have your reports. You give them to your board monthly, but you don't give them to this board.
In a, in a,
Right?
Public meeting to the hospital board, that, all that information is there and is, is upon request, can be received.
That's, that's great. I'm glad the hospital board has it. They have a right to have it because that's an expenditure on their part, but the county has a right to have it also. And they should be getting it.
And real quick, I'm the hospital board member off the commission with this request. I never knew it, but that's something I can assure that comes over too. I do get it monthly because I sit on the board, I look at it. So like I said, if we didn't get it, then, uh, like I said, I, I could take some of the responsibility for that to make sure that it does happen.
I just feel that the county needs, needs that too because they're the other half of the contract.
I missed that piece, so.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Cathy.
And that was, that was my statement is that we've had,
Okay.
Kathy was on the board and Mike's on the board and they get it every month and they, they're our mouthpiece to you guys. So if the reports seem to get back, they are.
But we're talking contracts and it was in the contract. So contract doesn't say you give it to the, the person sitting on the representation of the commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess it's, that's, how do we proceed is what we're looking at here.
Off, off of my question, so this brings it to where we're stalling, or what the stalls are. I think the questions address what it is. I, I mean, is, is, is it, Lake, are we under budget pressure for finance to, I, I mean, to put some demands down to keep this negotiation going? Or are we at the point financially, we need to make the decision?
Well, we, we created a budget just in case the county wants to take it back on. So we have budgeted for that to happen, but it's just gonna be trial back air. We won't know until we're actually operating it, but our budget's done, so.
Commissioner, we have been running out of contract for a year now. So yes,
Two years.
We need to make a decision. Twenty-one?
Twenty-one is when the last.
Two years. Yeah, so yes.
But we haven't negotiated. Um, this is a three hundred thousand dollar cost to the, to the taxpayers. I also see as a possibility of a huge cost to the taxpayers if it would take. And the, the, the service hasn't been interrupted or, or unmanageable. I mean, we're down to, can, I, I mean, one of the biggest things is the financial report is one of our demands to say that, you know, we want to do a cost center and do that. If we can't negotiate that or decide to say, well, we'll try to come up with something like that here. And the Austin piece is, I, I think is huge. I mean, then, then yeah, we do it, but I don't see where we're, we're forced to not say in a month, this comes back, you know, convert, Jason, are they willing to go further? They could have their committees on the side. I like the, I don't believe in a huge twelve people in a room doing it. I think they, they, this is what they got. They negotiate, the two of them negotiate back and forth, which I, I think has been good, but I think the staff skills are still, I, I don't know, to me it's still somewhat minor.
It's, um, and I don't know if it'd be a huge tax increase because every person pays taxes to the hospital. So it's like, I think it's one for the other. I mean, it's all the money being spent there. Where I see it, it becomes a, a, um, service issue and then basically keeping an EMS here in Landmark County staff with fair wages is, is some of the biggest things that I see, so. Yes, ma'am.
I do have another question. If the county were to take it over, then would you, would the hospital would probably want you to pay for the ambulance?
Barn, barn over there.
That was the five thousand that we talked about.
Yeah, six thousand a year.
What?
Five thousand a month?
Five thousand a month.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Roughly. It would have to be approved.
Do you get into wage? And is that the wage we're coming in at or are we, are we looking at, I mean, to go to Elko in that hour, your, your salary in overtime is, is huge. You know, there's, there's employers that run them here, you know, within the, the industries we have that, like I said, the EMTs and all that, the paramedics are paid, but the EMTs are all, you know, I, I don't want to not say go back to volunteer service, but if we're gonna compete with Elko at twenty-eight, you know, is, is part of the hospital, Jason, when they come in, is that during their work hour? Does that assist in giving the, 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 the EMS personnel the ability for some overtime pay and that to keep their wage up?
No, it's part of their shift.
It's just part of their shift?
So they're on for a, a forty-eight hour shift or, or whatever. And so when they come in, it's just part of their shift. And so if that's, if that's an overtime part of their shift, then they're on overtime.
The way I see it right now is that we have decisions to make which are strictly financial, whether we want to, to outsource this out again to the hospital at twenty-five thousand a month and then pay for Austin and pay for the ambulances and whatever. But I still go back to, there's more than just finances for us to decide and some of it is the personnel. And I had asked before, but, um, that's when I interrupted you and I'm sorry.
You're so mean about it.
Well, you hesitated too long. I thought you were done. So excuse me. Um, but I would like to know if anybody has any comments on the personnel and whether it makes a difference working for the hospital or the county? And, and anything else that we should be considering, because we've got all the finances to consider, right?
Yes.
So, any other input?
Hello, I'm CJ Safford. I've been working for EMS in the hospital for about five years. And I, I can't speak for the entire EMS staff, but, uh, for myself, I'd like to say that EMS as a calling is why we do the job, whether I'm working for the hospital or the county. Other than the concern of maybe re-interviewing for the same position, might give you some headache, but we, we, we do it for the work. So we're, we're gonna be here for the community regardless of what happens today.
Okay, thank you CJ. That's nice to know. So, um, is there room to negotiate, Jason, or your, is your list, your list and that's where it's at and?
Jason Blake for the record. You know, this has been going on for two years. Um, there've been some tough meetings. Uh, one of Bert's first meetings, when the previous, uh, district attorney was here, was a rough meeting. I came out of there with three black eyes and, and fourteen broken ribs. And, uh, we have been working through this. COVID hit and kind of shut us down a little bit. And, um, but Bert and I have been working through this. Uh, there are some areas that I feel that, that our board may have some stopping points. But I can take back what, what I can. Basically, it comes down to this, in, in my opinion, in my, and, and I'm just one lonely guy here. If the county would like us to do the job, tell us to do the job, give us the resources to do it and we'll do the job, just as we have for twelve years. We've taken care of the community for twelve years and I think it's been a positive for the community. If, if the county wants to take it and run it themselves, I will assist in whatever way I can to, to make that transition strong and possible. The hospital will continue to provide care. Um, if the, if the county takes it, we will continue to work with the county on EMS and make it a, a good thing. Really, if, if the county commission wants to give me some points of negotiation, say this is what I want, or you could do it through Bert and Bert and I can have the conversation. I'll go to my board and we'll, we'll figure it all out. But really, either way, I want Landmark County to be safe and secure. And I'll, I'll do what I need to do to make sure that happens.
Here's one, Mike.
Lake and I'll have to speak to it on the three hundred thousand. Now, we budgeted for a service, but I don't know, because we weren't at this, we weren't hearing negotiations yet, I don't know what we have in budget for the three hundred thousand. But I would certainly like direction from this board on what you guys feel is an acceptable negotiation. If this is on paper, we're good with it. If it's not, then I would like direction on what that is.
I think the hard part is that we don't have any idea of what it would cost to this and what we should budget if we took it over. We have no.
Well, we, we had a rough, we put, I think.
We, we have the budget for the wages and that, and we already purchased all the equipment anyway. So that's not in the three hundred thousand. We're, and I don't, to my understanding, we would still be purchasing all the equipment, ambulances, et cetera. We'd just be changing the nameplates. So that's just not accounted for in this, what you guys are seeing in front of you. We would still be purchasing all the equipment.
They're gonna lease back the ambulances though.
Yeah.
Yep. That was one of his negotiation.
Yep, something so we can get further, for some tax credit there, but.
I mean, what do you think, what do you think it would cost the county to take it back?
What was budgeted?
Yeah, we budgeted for this budget.
Eight hundred?
Lake and Sullivan for the record. We budgeted for eight full-time employees and then we also kept the volunteer stipend in there that Austin has, just in case. Um, and then we added quite a few lines, operating lines, because, uh, Battle Mountain Ambulance only had a couple of operating lines.
I, I didn't remember whether we increased the wages, so that's what I'm saying.
Oh, the wage we accounted for, uh, uh, what we already negotiated through union. So, uh, with our union, we have negotiated wages that are in there for our EMTs and EMS. So them, them wages are what we accounted for when we created our budget.
So it is, it would be an increase to them.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you know what they are?
We don't have EMTs in our union. We have EMSs and I believe it's at, it's starting wage at twenty-three oh five, right?
We budgeted for eight full-time employees at twenty-three an hour, so we weren't sure.
And when we set aside, we did eight, eight hundred? Austin, was that, am I wrong?
The personnel budget was eight hundred thousand and the operating was three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
It's just whether we wanted it in Landmark County or not. I mean, it's just, that's what it's as simple as it boils down to.
I mean, hearing that the staff is comfortable, I'm comfortable with whatever you guys want to do. Staffing is important everywhere, so.
One of my concerns is, is, um, the housing of what, where we would be. I mean, before I would take it over, I would like to make sure that we can at least, um, make sure what their board says about us leasing out the building where the ambulances and the staff are. I wouldn't want to go in there blindly and not, you know.
Yeah. I think Brian said homeless, is that what?
Yeah, homeless, yes. I mean, that would have to be before I'd want to even consider that because we have no place to put them right now.
Oh, I can't believe they would kick us out.
Well, I know, but I know, but you still want to make sure you have that before you make that decision.
Not really. Um, I mean, you, you can't always do that because we want a decision made before July first and his board isn't gonna meet. So I mean, we're saying we're gonna cooperate for that, for our county, for goodness sakes. I mean, I can't see the hospital board saying, well, no, you can't have it. Or yes, some outrageous figure that isn't fair. Fair market value is fair market value.
Okay, Chris, I want to say to Jason, Mike?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, I'll, I'll close with this. Um, the guys, you guys see on that back wall, the, the ladies and gentlemen back there, the people that are listening from our station right now, they're all extremely nervous, right? They don't know what's gonna happen with their lives pending today. So I think it's pretty pivotal that when we leave today, if it's all possible, that they have some kind of direction and some kind of reassurance that they're gonna be compensated fairly. Right? That they are going to, uh, be taken care of here and that, uh, they have some longevity here, because I-
Right, that they are going to, uh, be taken care of here, and that, uh, they have some longevity here, because I promise you this, if we do not do it here, some other county will, some other flight agency will, someone else will, and we will lose them to somewhere else.
Thank you, Jason.
Jason Blake for the record, I don't want to speak out of turn, but like Patsy says, we're not going to, uh, leave the EMS staff homeless. Um, it, it's just not going to happen. Uh, and, and I'm sure, I'm positive that my board will work with me and with you all. If, if that's what is desired, to be separated, uh, they will work with us to make sure that the EMS is taken care of and not homeless. Um, that number of five thousand dollars that I threw out there, that was just kind of a, here we go, it might be around this, based on this study that was done by that BBG group. They won't be homeless.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Guaranteed.
I have a public comment online, she asked, until they can give us justification on what numbers of EMS revenues and expenditures are, how can we negotiate a proper contract?
Well, I think that was kind of some of the debate that we've had.
Jason, are we, are you able to put that as one of the focal points on, on the continued negotiations? Is, is this financial report coming to where it's broke down to the E, the EMT service separate from everything else? I, I mean, it's broke down to the cost expenditures, college, transports, all of that to where it's not just a bulk line item for everybody to look at?
I will take it to my board, maybe I can get a list of, of exactly how the county commission wants it reported, and I'll take it to the board, and we can, we can have that conversation. It's not that we can't do it, um, it's just different than what we have. So I think that could be, um, a possibility going forward, yes.
I mean, that's, that's what I see.
That's what I see is the biggest downplay of this is, you know, I think there's a question on transparency, you know, and, you know, breaking it down to, to exact cost, it's there, it's just breaking it down to where everybody can take a look at it.
What's the board's play, is there a motion that we terminate, keep it, further negotiate?
I think we should further negotiate and get our problem worked out. And I do believe the EMS should be getting competitive wages.
I, I think that they're getting competitive no matter which way we go, I think we need, definitely need to address that, no matter which way it is. Um, I hate to see us break, uh, with Austin and Battle Mountain, I'd like to keep us all one-
Yeah, exactly.
I, I really would, um, we are Landur County EMS.
And is that?
I, uh, I'm going to make a motion that, um, Landur County take over the EMS service.
Okay, I'll second that motion. So there's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay, all right, that's it, guys. So we'll move into correspondence, reports, future agenda items. If there's none, I'll ask for public comment for non-agendaized items, is there public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion for agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks to everybody for coming today.
Thank you all, and, and we've just saved Battle Mountain Hospital a loss.
Muted.
Right? Thank you.
Unmuted. Muted.